You, Chastity.
Okay, excellent. Good evening. Thank you so much for being with us tonight. My name is Chastity Hamamoto and I am the delightful president of Bellflower Council PTA. And just so you know, Bellflower Council PTA oversees all the PTAs in the Bellflower Unified School District. So we have the privilege to work with all of our elementary schools, from Baxter Elementary School, all the way to Stephen Foster, from Mayfair to Bellflower in Somerset. So I thank you for being with us tonight. The reason that we asked to incorporate this with the League of Women Voters was so we could give all of our families and our students and our faculty and our friends an opportunity to meet the candidates that are running for Bellflower Unified School District Board. So I thank you again for giving us the opportunity to work with the League of Women Voters. They've been amazing and we appreciate their help and knowing how to run this forum. Obviously, in a time when we don't know exactly how we're doing everything with Zoom and with everything, but they've been amazing and helpful and we just are grateful for the opportunity to work with them and to introduce the candidates and we thank you for giving us an opportunity to be with us tonight. So with that, I will go ahead and pass it to Ms. Jan.
Thank you very much. I really want to welcome our candidates, our hosting organization, the Bellflower Council of PTAs, and all of you out there in the audience who care enough about your school board and your community to join us here tonight. So let me introduce the league team before I go any further. I'm Jan Gallop. I'm the moderator tonight. I'll be asking the questions. And Vicky Chevigny is our timer. She's going to be holding up the green when it's go, 15-second warning, and a red when it's stop. Kim Ritter Martinez will be gathering your questions for the second half off of our Q and A. And our all-important tech support is Jane Bemis. Thank you all for your support tonight. Before we begin the forum, I want to go over our format with you. I want to give you some information about how the League of Women Voters conducts this kind of an event. The League of Women Voters is 100 years old this year. We are a political but nonpartisan organization. That means we do not support or oppose any candidate ever. We have an advocacy mission, but tonight we're here on our education mission. And that is to help our voters be very informed about every issue that is affecting them and their community, to get them registered and then get them to the polls. We expect that all of our participants tonight will conduct themselves in a respectful and professional way so that we can discuss issues and not personalities. The candidates have agreed in writing to this. And you've asked, several of you have asked about recording. We will be recording. I think we're recording right now, are we not, Jane? I believe we are. And we will make this recording available on our website and on our YouTube channel and we will send the link to the Bellflower Council of PTAs to distribute. About recording, however, recording of this event, whether it is in person or on a computer screen, may not be used without the express written approval of the League of Women Voters. The League will only allow audio and video of this event to be broadcast in its entirety. Okay, on to the format. We're going to be moving quickly here tonight. The format is as follows. Each candidate will have one minute to make a self-introductory opening statement. We randomly selected just before we came on live. And Mr. Critchfield will go first, Ms. Garza second, and Dr. Alhessen third. We will be reversing the order with every question that we ask. After the opening statements, candidates will be asked questions that were submitted in writing to the Council of PTAs. And they will have one and a half minutes to answer each of those questions. Every candidate will answer every question. After that, we will move on to written questions that the audience can submit through the Q and A link on your screen. We have disabled chat. We wanted to come through Q and A so there's as little distraction on the screen as possible. Thank you for your understanding of that. We will ask as many, those questions, by the way, are one-minute responses. The second half are one-minute responses. We will ask as many questions as time permits. If you don't hear your question, it may be that we combined it with another question or we simply ran out of time. Then candidates will have three minutes for a closing statement and we will wrap up and end. Any questions before we begin? All right. The first question, and that goes to Mr. Critchfield as we had previously discussed. Your answer first, please. Briefly describe your commitment to public education and to the Bellflower School District.
Jan, are we going to do the introductions first?
I did it again. I can't believe it. I get so wrapped up in the questions, I forget to do the opening statements. Thank you for the reminder. Please do your opening statement first.
Well, first of all, I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Council of PTAs. And also Dr. Sue Alhessen and Myra Garza. I appreciate the opportunity to talk to you and hear your ideas as well. First of all, I'm very humbled, the fact that I'm even campaigning for school board. I wasn't the best student growing up, so if you were to tell third grade me that I would be running for school board, he'd probably never believe you. I grew up with five brothers in a small apartment in Pomona. And we lived on welfare in a pretty rough neighborhood. And it developed some character. But that past really showed me the importance of schools, not only the educational aspect, but also the human impact that schools, teachers, staff, and parents can have on the children and what that impact can have on the greater community. So thank you for the opportunity. So I saw the red sign, so I stopped.
It's it. Okay. So, good afternoon. Thank you to everyone. And I just want to give you a little bit, you know, briefly explain about me. I am a mother of three boys, 22, 13, and 11. I'm a 16-year union member. I've been part of, you know, BTA for and union leadership as well as a representative. I am a first-time candidate. And I am also, your classic American story. I went to school in one of the poorest districts in our state. And I worked hard, studied hard, and I became a successful compenation, a teacher. My philosophy of us teaching and looking at education as a means for upward mobility came from my mother and from personal experiences. We always knew that education was the key to our success. So, thank you.
Okay.
Alhessen, yes, please.
All right. Hello. Education to me is very important as a person with a disability. I think that's allowed me the opportunity to excel and move forward in my life. As I was growing up, I wasn't afforded the opportunity to go to regular education. I was always put in special ed and have to often go to hospital schools. So I appreciate the public school system and the ability to allow equal opportunity for all students to be engaged in education. I firmly believe and have been, ever since I've been working with students at the school district since the 1990s, at Bellflower Unified School District specifically, and helping them achieve their goals, whether it's academic or career goals. I'm heavily involved in the CalAps program here at Bellflower Unified School District, which supports students who want to move into the careers of the fields, such as fire science and so forth, culinary arts. So I believe equality and inclusion for all. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, Ms. Garza, you will be answering the first question now that we've done our introductory statements. The first question is, briefly describe your commitment to public education and the Bellflower School District.
My commitment to public education and our district comes from a deeply rooted philosophy that education, like I said, is the way of mobility. If you, if we offer those services and we offer the support as teachers and as a district, we can help all our students succeed. Everyone has the potential to get to meet their goals. And this is what I strive to do as a board member.
Very good. Thank you. And Dr. Alhessen, please. The same question.
As I stated earlier, I really believe in public education and the power that it provides for people to move forward in their lives. Most importantly, I believe that it's a team effort that brings together a sexual child through the school district, whether it's with the parent, the teachers, and the administrators. I firmly believe that, since I've been at Bellflower Unified School District, not only as a counselor and consultant at Somerset High School, but also as a board member, a previous board member. So I have the full gamut of understanding the process of education, K through 12, and college and beyond. Thank you.
Thank you. And Mr. Critchfield, please.
My commitment to public education, our district, and most importantly, our students, is that I will always listen to our community. I will appreciate the knowledge and experience of our teachers. And as a classified employee myself, I will always value the input of our classified staff. But my primary commitment is going to be to our children and their educational well-being. And as a parent of young learners myself, I have a very vested interest in our school district for many years to come. So my promise is that all of my decisions and everything I do will be for the students. And I believe that any decision that benefits the children should benefit everybody inside the district. And that's what I'm committed to doing as a board member.
Thank you very much. Let's see. Dr. Alhessen, you will be starting our second question, please. Please tell us about your leadership or participation in recent school activities.
Okay, well, my leadership activities are pretty vast in regards to, not only being a board member. I was a commissioner for Cal State Long Beach on the executive board, specifically appointed by the president on inclusive excellence. I was heavily involved in the diversity building of that program as well as supporting students and equality. My role at Bellflower Unified School District and the leadership role is I'm an advisor for the CalAps program, where I'm involved in supporting and moving forward our students in curriculum, specifically in the trades, culinary arts, performing arts, and also fire science and law enforcement. So I've been heavily involved in education in my leadership role, actually since the 1990s, where I first started being a counselor and also an advisor at Somerset High School and also at Bellflower High School. So I was a consultant supporting students in achieving their career goals. I'm a firm believer that specifically for our youth, if they have a vision, they can achieve it. And I always move forward to making sure our student can really see where they want to go. Then they understand, most specifically, why they're sitting in a math class, why they're taking history, why they're taking the sciences. So vision's most important. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Critchfield, please.
So for the first part of the question, the leadership, I currently sit as the chairman of the Greater Lakewood Chamber of Commerce and I do a lot with community engagement with the chamber. And that's something I would carry over into, onto the board. When it comes to school activities, I have two daughters, three and six. So there haven't been too many activities, especially in the past year. But my child being in special needs, a lot of the activities were very confined to her classroom or Special Olympics or book readings. There's a Halloween hunt, I think, one time. But mostly, I'm there dropping her off every day. And usually, if you see me drop her off on the first day of school, you can usually catch me crying because these kids grow up way too fast. But I really do look forward to being more engaged once we're back on campus safely with our students. It's something that I, you know, I really look forward to being engaged as a board member and having my family and my daughters be more engaged in the community and the district for, again, many years to come.
Thank you. Ms. Garza, please.
With regards to leadership, I came onto Bellflower Unified School District about six years ago. And that's where I started becoming more involved in advocating for a student in our dual immersion program. So we, I was able to be in this unique position where I can get the resources for parents and connect them to them, also provide events that help parents understand the education program that they had chosen for their kids. I also then became leader of the dual immersion program. And we would sit and plan for the success of all our students at every level. I also, as far as events, I am always continually promoting connections with parents and the community. I worked within my own classroom and collaborated with colleagues on campus so that way we can offer, you know, back-to-school nights, also informational conferences for parents. And later on, I also helped out start a Cub Scouts on our campus.
Thank you so much. Our next question goes to Mr. Critchfield first. What should school boards do?
School boards should develop a clear vision for the district, one that is reflective of the needs and values of the community, hire, direct assess, evaluate the superintendent and support superintendent, and create accountability through oversight and approve the budget.
Thank you very much. Ms. Garza.
I agree with Mr. Critchfield. As a board member, we do need to oversee the budgets. We need to approve them. We also need to set a clear vision for our superintendent and place accountability measures within that so that way the vision is being, you know, brought into fruition. We need to also support, you know, staff members and our superintendent in reaching those goals. We need to work together to make those goals come true for all our students. Then we also, we also need to make some connections within our city so that way we can start bringing in that community perspective as well.
Thank you. And Dr. Alhessen, please.
Well, first and foremost, the board is fiscally responsible and accountable for the taxpayer. And then we're also responsible, as mentioned earlier, to supervise and oversee and direct the superintendent. In addition, as a board member, it's important to understand you work together as a team. And part of that team has to build in collaboration with building board policies, understanding union needs and goals, and also supporting the community and what their needs are. That's one of the key areas that I was responsible for and worked for when I was a board member. A key thing, too, is that we are the bridge to other communities, other school districts, to look at best practices and how we can support our school district in moving forward, especially as we are moving forward today in the pandemic situation, is looking at best practices, what's happening out there. How can we best improve our district and support our parents and support our students? And most importantly, our teachers. Are we giving them the right resources that they need in order to do their jobs? Whether it's online or in the classroom, I think it's very important. And also providing the appropriate resources, being able to understand budget constraints as well as being able to clearly define what's important for the district.
Thank you. Our fourth question goes to Ms. Garza first, please. Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
But the strengths that I would bring to the board are a teacher's perspective. Also, the value that I bring would include having these communication with parents and also communities, people in our community that also encompass city leaders and other board members of other school districts. So that it, once I get on the board, I know that there, I will be able to collaborate with my colleagues and work towards those, that vision and those goals that we set for the district.
Thank you. Dr. Alhessen, you're next.
Could you repeat the question again?
Certainly. Please summarize the strengths you would bring as a member of the board.
Okay. One of my greatest strengths is my leadership ability, my team-building ability, my collaborative ability, and also my connections and relationship within the district and outside the district. Specifically, I serve on the commission with Janice Hahn for Public Social Services, which really is vital right now in what we're dealing with. In addition, I'm a commissioner for Governor Newsom. My role in those commissions is a resource to be able to support the district in different areas as they arise. It's important to have not only collaborative contacts but also resources, given whatever situation may be arising. My leadership ability goes, is vast from not only in the area of building collaborative relationships. For example, I was instrumental in being able to work with the Linwood School District Board. I served with two board members while I'm on the CalAps, CalAps Board. We have a separate board for that. So two representatives from the school district for Bellflower and Linwood. So that kind of shows my collaborative and building spirit as well as working in collaboration with city officials. Most important, what I offer is my lens of compassion and understanding, given my background and my struggles that I've had as a person with a disability and knowing how hard it is to be able to prove yourself. Thank you.
And Mr. Critchfield.
Well, one of the biggest strengths is bringing a parent's perspective to the board. Like I said, I have two daughters, one general ed, one special ed. And I think that it's important that parents are heard on the board and by the board. I was a small business owner for 10 years until COVID messed that up. So I worked the business, whether it was scrubbing floors, accounting, marketing, customer service, which I think is a huge part of being in public service, is customer service. Sitting as chairman of the Chamber of Commerce, so I know boardsmanship, I know leadership, I know community engagement. And I'm also an educational media producer at Long Beach City College. And I feel that those skills and strengths going into this COVID and post-COVID era are going to be very important as we move through this digital era and break through these technological language barriers going forward. So I feel I have very fresh, new ideas. I'm very passionate and energetic as a parent and entrepreneur. And I bring a lot of that, that new energy onto the board that I think we need right now, as well as the experience to not only have new ideas but actually know how to implement those ideas and get people to go with me down those, sometimes, you know, very lengthy processes of implementing those.
Thank you. Our fifth question goes first to Dr. Alhessen. What do you see as the strengths of the school board?
The strengths of the school board is being able to have transparency. I think that's very important. Because we're accountable and it holds us accountable. My theme in running for school board is academics and accountability equals student success. And I firmly believe that because everyone is accountable as part of the district and moving forward in our strategic goals and addressing student needs and addressing union needs and addressing the needs of our community and of parents. So everyone has a role to play in that. And everyone has to play the role of being accountable for that. That's one of the greatest strengths, I think, the board can offer is transparency, collaboration, open communication, and also the ability to negotiate.
Thank you. Mr. Critchfield.
And so the question, again, I'm sorry, it's...
What do you see as the strengths of the school district?
Okay. So I've actually learned a lot in the past couple of months of campaigning, being a younger parent in the district. I've asked a lot of questions. I've had very good conversations with teachers and community members and parents, and I've asked them that. Sometimes when you're campaigning, you'll hear some complaints and some very valid concerns. And one thing I always asked was, if they had valid concerns, tell me one thing that's good. You know, one thing that's positive, because I think it's important moving forward that we build on the positive things of the board. So a few of those, one, people always talked about how tight-knit the district has been, how it always felt like family, and there's a long history there. And people rave about the level of instruction that their kids are getting, the quality of teachers that we have. And there were other things as well. But those are a couple of the things that I think we need to really highlight and celebrate as a district moving forward. And I think it's important. There's a lot of things that need to be fixed. But I think there's some things that, you know, we need to celebrate and build upon moving forward. And I think a lot of it is the human equity. We have a lot of really good people in our district and we need to celebrate them. And I think that's something that is a huge strength that we'll build upon for many years to come.
Thank you. And Ms. Garza, please.
Thank you. So I believe that the, what we actually have within our school district is that we are small, but we have high expectations for all our students. So we are able to provide that individual, you know, time to show our kids, you know, what, to get them up to speed, provide that instruction that they need at that level. We also, we have a lot of community. We do as a school district. We, I see it all the time, teachers helping teachers, teachers helping parents. We are very, like Mr. Critchfield said, we're a very tight community. And that's what I think that is one of the virtues that we have here in our district. We also are able to start, you know, because we're small, we're able to do a lot more for our kids. There is always room for improvement. And that's what I believe that we can do together because we already collaborate on all other levels as well. So I'm looking forward to us not just, you know, going into and solving these problems that we have now, but also using those valleys that come with our district.
Thank you. Our sixth question goes to Mr. Critchfield first. What should be the relationship between the board members and the administration in the handling of school concerns?
So I think that depends on the concern. But generally speaking, I would say the relationship between the board and the superintendent needs to be one that's built upon trust and cooperation and a strong partnership. And when it comes to certain issues, it's just very important to let the appropriate person handle the appropriate concerns. And really, the board should be there to oversee and, you know, I think the last thing people want is six superintendents. But I think it's all about the relationship and the cooperation between the staff and the board. The board should be creating the vision and... The board should be creating the vision and directing the superintendent. And, you know, there's, you know, a lot more to what the board's going to be doing. But as far as that relationship is concerned, that's going to be the most important. And yeah, I think the board is there to offer their guidance and support. And that's what we need to do. And I think having the right people in the right positions and the right jobs is really important. And that's something we get to look at once we're, you know, you know, once we're on the board, you really get to assess, you know, who's doing their job. And you get to assess how things can be better.
Thank you. Ms. Garza.
Can I have the question one more time? I'm sorry.
Of course. What should the relationship be between the board members and the administration in the handling of school concerns?
So I believe that the relationship between the board and the administration should be one of, absolutely, the board should be setting the vision for the superintendent. The superintendent would then execute that vision. We need to make sure that we collaborate together to form those expectations as a board for, you know, timely goals for our superintendent, support the superintendent whenever it is necessary, and make sure that we are having also those conversations with community, with our parents, with different focus groups that need to weigh in on issues before we make a decision as a board. And all that happens through a strong leader, a strong superintendent who understands the needs of our district.
Thank you. And Dr. Alhessen, please.
Okay. I'm going to take a little different stance than my opponents is that as a board member, when you handle concerns from the community, which I did, it ranges from retired classified staff. It ranges from parents who are concerned about their students and what school they should be going to or not going to. It has to do with a vast array of, when you say concerns, all those things started coming to my head are issues that come up. Yes, we as a board, because we are representatives of the taxpayer and representatives of the community, issues will come up that we will then address to the superintendent, who then will be guided to delegate it to the right person. Our role then is to make sure it's followed through and the request is then remedied or the situation or concern is remedied at that point. Usually, problems come up to a board member, like I said, from the community or arise from a retiree who might need situations such as they didn't get their paycheck. I had that one time. And I had to interview and find out what was going on and how we can support that. So it's a vast array of issues that usually come up. Our role is to facilitate that through the superintendent, who then will delegate it out and then hopefully the resolution would be resolved at that point.
Thank you. We're moving on to our seventh question, which goes to Ms. Garza first. What do you see as the area or areas needing most, most needing improvement in the school district? As a school board member, what would you do to realize those improvements?
So where I see the need at this point is the communication. We need to work with our parents, we need to work with our teachers and staff, and make sure that everybody is on the same page, that we all understand that these are very trying times. So we allow each other some flexibility, some understanding especially. No one has, you know, the blueprints for what we're going through. So obviously, any ideas are more than welcome at this point. And we need to make sure that there is also that communication piece. The second one would be our transparency. We need to make sure that parents are able to be at board meetings, whether it be physically or virtually. At this point, it would absolutely be virtual. But we need to have that communication with them in that way. And that way, parents feel like they are part of the solution that we have heard them. There also needs to be strong leadership and understanding that there are, you know, goals and expectations that will be set by the board and that we all together have to work towards those goals. It's not easy, you know, we can't do it alone. This will involve all levels of our community.
Thank you. And to Dr. Alhessen, please.
Could you repeat the question one more time, please?
Of course. What do you see as the area or areas needing most improvement in the school district? As a school board member, what would you do to realize those improvements?
I agree with Myra on the points of transparency and also 360-degree feedback communication loop. I think that's really important. That not only you're not disseminating information, but that you're receiving it back and that it can be modified and directed appropriately. The other thing that I think is really important is understanding the needs of parents right now. That's really critical. I think parents are really struggling. Being an online instructor myself for over 10 years with the University of Phoenix, I understand some of the challenges when I first started doing online. But also, being able to have an understanding of what key principles of engagement for students and parents to help them through this process. So the key areas I'll reemphasize is communication, collaboration, and clear negotiations between different members in the community, that's our unions, as well as with our city. I have really developed strong and good working relationships with all of our city councilmen here in Bellflower. And that's really critical, especially when we're looking at our BB funds and how we're disseminating that information. And we're building a brand-new high school right now at Mayfair. All those come together in being able to have a successful school year and also for the next five years strategic planning.
Thank you. And Mr. Critchfield, please.
So right off the bat, the word that comes to mind is trust. I think we need to rebuild the trust in the district and have a positive cultural shift. I think most people can agree that we need to, that things can be negative at times. And it's important, moving through this election and after the election, that we create that positive shift. Because when you have that positive, those positive relationships with board members, with staff, with teachers, with our classified staff employees, when kids get on campus, they feel that. And I think there's a real impact when kids get on campus and they're surrounded by that. So we need to get there. And I think it's done by doing something that Ms. Garza said is, it's the transparency and the communication. You know, working with the Lakewood Chamber of Commerce, we all, we focus primarily on communication. And we work with the city council in Lakewood. We work with a lot of elected officials in the area. And it's all about community building and getting people on board to make change that's going to serve our children in the future. And also, just collaborating with, you know, Myra and I are both endorsed by the CSEA and BTA. And I think having them at the table and them having a voice is very important. And I think that with a positive cultural shift and positive energy going forward, I think we're going to see some really great change in our school district.
Thank you. We are moving on to question number eight. And this one will go to Dr. Alhessen first. Do you believe that the district is adequately supporting students with special needs? And how might you work to improve that support?
That has always been my mission, even when I was a board member. I think there's a great room for improvement in addressing our needs for our special ed needs. One area I was specifically looking for is supporting our special ed students in transitioning to college. They weren't afforded the same opportunity as our able-bodied students. So I was instrumental in helping to create a bridge program with Cerritos College. And through that process, we were, I wanted students to be able to take college courses while in high school, earn credit to be a motivator to continue on to Cerritos College. So part of that was we were having someone from the Disabled Student Services Center at Cerritos come onsite to Bellflower, you know, our district, and provide classes to, and it's more the career planning, study management skills. The whole process was that to have them feel empowered. And I think that's something that's really important, that to foster that sense of empowerment for our students with special needs. And we do that through experiences, through learning experiences, and supporting our teachers and being able to develop those experiences together in collaboration with the parents, the students, and the teacher. So I'm a visionary from that perspective. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Critchfield, please.
So first of all, I just want to say thank you, Dr. Sue, for the work that you've done for special, special needs. I know that's a very important issue for you and I appreciate what you've done. I myself am a parent of a special needs student. And this is an issue, you know, I didn't know it'd be such a big role in my life, you know, when, you know, before we had her, obviously. And this is something that is a, is a very near and dear to me. But as a board member, I'm there to serve all students. And, you know, when it comes to special needs, we should cut no corners and they should get, all of their needs should be met and they should be served to the fullest extent that is available. And more than that, you know, also looking at other districts and seeing what they're doing. When we go into this distance learning, you know, environment, you know, where are our investments in adaptive technologies? You know, what more can we do? And so this is a topic that's near and dear to me. But the short answer is we've got to do whatever we can to make sure our young learners, especially our special needs students, are met.
Thank you. And Ms. Garza, please.
So again, thank you, Dr. Sue, for your work in that area. I agree with Mr. Critchfield as well. We need to be able to look at other districts and see what adaptive technologies are they using. We also need to look at how are we investing the funds that we are having at, that we have at this point to better support the parents, better support our staff and our teachers, to be able to give the services that all of our students, you know, who are needing this support at this time dearly, you know, to be able to get that to them as soon as possible. I know that at this point, a lot of parents are very frustrated because they're not able to help their children the way that they, they wish that they could. So definitely looking at some of those resources and seeing how are we allocating them? Are we doing, you know, the best by our special needs students? And is there something else that maybe we can look at other districts and, you know, kind of bring over and adapt to what we have and the way we want to roll that out to be able to support these families?
Thank you very much. Mr. Critchfield, you're up for question number nine. What would you like to accomplish as a board member and which is your highest priority and why?
So I've brought it up before, but I'm going to say it again. I really believe in having a positive cultural shift and getting people back to a level of trust and communication so we can all work together and get things firing off in all cylinders. I think it's, I think it's very important. And I know that can happen too. I think that once we do put in place measures where we are improving communication and leading with integrity, I think, I think things will get better in that regard. So that's just right off the bat. And I also would like to see our district really lead the way with things. I feel like sometimes, and this isn't a criticism, this is just an observation as a parent. Sometimes I feel like we kind of hang, hang back a little bit. And especially, maybe it's because I'm kind of a techie, like I really like cameras and techie and this media stuff. I feel like we could really engage this distance learning thing on another level. And I think that if we, if we really look at it, we could improve the effectiveness of our education by making small shifts in how we decide to do this distance learning thing and also bringing parents along and reducing the, I call it the technological language barrier. And because every parent is now a tech support specialist, I think there's things that we can do there right off the bat. So positive culture shift and improvement in educational technology, just, you know, feet hit the ground running, that's what we've got to do.
Thank you. Ms. Garza, please.
Oh, I believe as well, like Mr. Critchfield is saying, it's more of a philosophy. I need to, as a teacher, I know that if I am expecting my students to do something, I have to model it. I have to give them time to work with it and, and I will be their support to do that. So I absolutely believe that we need to build that trust again with our community, with our parents and our teachers. Make sure that we are developing those, you know, helping out the teachers right now. Because, and the parents, because they are both struggling through distance learning. There's a lot of type of supports that we can probably give them, but we just haven't really looked out and kind of, you know, looked beyond our community and our district. So we would absolutely be able to bring those back and help our, out our teachers and our parents and give them that support that way. But obviously, it all has to come from me and me bringing those questions up and being, you know, kind of the one to start the conversations. And a lot of conversations will be difficult and, you know, uncomfortable. But we need to start that conversation.
Thank you. And Dr. Alhessen, please.
Could you repeat the question one more time, please?
Absolutely. What would you like to accomplish as a board member? Which is your highest priority and why?
One of the things I would like to accomplish is to make sure, especially now, our students have a safe environment to return to. I think that's fairly important, given our current situation. Things are constantly going to be evolving and changing. But one of my main goals is safety and security. The building of mutual respect among administrators, among board members, and with the superintendent. And the most important thing too, I think, is Brad mentioned, this is trust. And the trust is really important from the perspective of communicating, honest, open communication, as Myra had mentioned. And also, the key thing with trust is it's built over time. And anytime you're looking at making, as Brad was saying, a cultural shift, those are things that come through a process. And during that process is the trust that starts building. So I think a lot of it has to do with, again, the open communication between our parents, between our teachers, between administrators, and the board members and the superintendent as a whole. We're in unprecedented territory right now. And I think it's important to understand that whatever we say as candidates can shift in an instant of our priorities and what we need to change. And I think that's important for everyone to keep in mind.
Thank you. Our last question of the pre-submitted questions will go to Ms. Garza first. As a board member, what steps would you take to communicate with parents and keep them engaged in the district?
So one of the things that we can absolutely, where there's room for improvement, is make sure that our board meetings are online, that they are streamed, that our website is user-friendly for parents and teachers. So that way, parents are not shuffling through pages and pages and can't find the very simplest resources for them. There, it needs to be also communication in all aspects, whether it be a text, whether it be email, a flyer home, you know, a really quick message from your teacher. So we need to exhaust every different vehicle to be able to communicate with our parents. And let it not be, you know, on us that we did not try to get information to them. And let it not be, you know, on us that we did not try to get information to them.
Thank you. And Dr. Elhessen, please.
I think it's really important that we, I think what Brad mentioned earlier is update our technology. And that has to do not only with our meetings, our board meetings and, and going virtual with that or possibility of doing that, but also parents having access to their teachers and asking questions as well as students. So being able to have a quick app or device that they can click into, to address that issue, I think would be a, a good tool right now, especially since we're on an, on, online learning environment. Another key thing that's important right now is access to Wi-Fi. Many students aren't able to log on, they're being cut off. Teachers aren't able to teach because there's a delay in the system and with the district. So I think those are important things that we need to look at and addressing. And to further expand and, and help our students catch up with their education, it's been known now that now students are seven to nine months behind academically because of COVID and the online experience. So those are some things that I think are important to start looking into and how we can address it from a technology perspective, communication, and also facilitating any learning processes through technology right now would be important, looking at best practices across the board.
Thank you. And Dr. Critchfield, please. Or I'm sorry, Mr.
Don't, no, no.
Take the title, that's great.
I mean, I mean, that was the most inexpensive PhD I could have ever gotten. Thank you.
I apologize.
If I could get that in writing, that'd be great. So as somebody who works in the communication department as my profession, I know that I, there are a lot of ways to communicate with our parents. But one thing that I don't think is talked about a lot is the accessibility. And, and Dr. Sue mentioned it too, there's a digital divide when it comes to access. So we, we have to be very careful, like going, going forward. Not only is it having hotspots and having the actual technology on hand, but there's also a new language barrier and we need to address that. We need to do more parent training on technology, especially if you're a Mac user. Because you get a, if you're a Mac user and you get one of those Chromebooks, it's like starting day one all over again. So we, we need to make sure that parents, we're able to communicate with parents. And again, I think it's just really getting our hands around the, the technological position. And, and then, then we could really open up the communication, but we got to have the tools and we need people to know how to use those tools. So I think that's first step. But communication obviously is a, is a big deal for me. It, it's, it's something that I feel I'm very well-equipped to address as far as it being an issue. And I think there's a lot of possibilities and a lot of opportunity to lead the way and have other districts look at what we're doing when it comes to engaging with students.
Thank you very much. We're moving into the next segment now, which is questions that are being submitted real time here. And I just want to clarify for our audience, the school board has asked us to ask each question of each candidate. So any question that is directed to just one candidate will not be answered tonight. Thank you for your understanding. Our first question, and it goes to Dr. Elhessen. Remember now you only have one minute for these responses. The first question is, will you commit to live stream and video and record board meetings? Anything to add?
That, that goes within, in line with where we are today and also specifically in improving communication and transparency.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Critchfield, please.
I'm back down to mister.
Sorry.
It's okay. Yes. Yeah, definitely. I think that's a, that really is a no-brainer. I think we should do it and we should encourage it. And we should also make sure that our live stream is accessible and it is compliant. And we are captioning and we are placing that, that live video and posting it on officially on our website. And if need be, if there are any special accommodations from parents, any requests that we should fulfill those as well. I think that, again, it's just one more way to, to build that communication and, and start building that trust over time.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, please.
Thank you. I agree with Mr. Critchfield. We do need to live stream and record these board meetings. It allows parents to be able to be part of the process. We should also, like stated before, be able to maybe offer them in different modalities, different languages, and also be able to service those parts of the community who need perhaps a translation, maybe hearing impaired notes. So we do need to offer all, all of those different types of modality so that way we have our community informed.
Thank you. Mr. Critchfield, this question comes to you. What are one or two of the current issues the Bellflower Unified School District faces right now? And if elected, what steps would you take to address that issue, those issues?
That's a great question. I don't want to, I don't want to pick one we've already talked about. Well, I, I think one that's kind of obvious is the reopening of schools, right? And I think that's something that's going to require a lot of collaboration with our teachers, with our staff and our parents. And I'm really encouraged by some of the outreach that's been happening as of late, as far as polling. I know there's a, a group of parents that have been doing some polling and getting that information from the, from the parents. Because when it comes down to it, safety is everything for me. I want our schools, when, when we do open up, to be safe, not only from COVID, but from anything else that could happen, especially, you know, in this, this new environment that we need to be very vigilant and very on top of our, our children's safety. So I think that's a big issue and one that I am 100% willing to focus on.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, please.
Would you repeat the question one more time?
Yes. What are some of the current, one or two of the current issues, the Bellflower Unified School District, and if elected, what steps would you take to address said issues?
So at this point, it's the connectivity and the technological gap that we're having. That's one of the issues that I see that we need to tackle foremost and properly as possible. There, you know, as Dr. Sue had said, our kids are having these gaps that are becoming larger and larger. So we need to make sure that we are providing those resources that we're making, that we're able to send the appropriate materials to parents, that we're providing the, the, the support, maybe even the, the training for teachers and parents to be able to connect and definitely make that accessible for them.
Thank you. And Dr. Elhessen, please.
I'm gonna, I'm going to share with you something that I was privy to from my commission meeting with Janice Hahn on Public Social Services. And the reason I bring this up is because it was something that the Department of Public Social Services was thinking of, of having a program where they're going to be hiring staff to help tutor students. And of course, being in education and a former board member, my antenna went up and I said, not without collaborating with the school districts. And I think that's really important to understand right now is that we currently have subject matter experts here in Bellflower Unified School District that currently aren't working, that can be utilized and have their expertise, provide tutoring, support services to parents as well as to students. And I think that's the collaborative that I would be bringing to the table of understanding what's happening on, from the LA County perspective and true we are as a district.
Thank you. The next question goes to Ms. Garcia first. How would you direct the school district if you were voted in specifically in regards to the three roles of hiring and firing superintendent, budget, and forming district policy?
So as a board member, I know that I oversee all of those areas. So I need to collaborate with my colleagues to come up with those expectations and those, assess the needs of our district first. We also would need to perhaps talk to our community, see what, what parents are looking at as most important to meet the needs of their students at this point. And then our process would follow where we would set up these goals and expectations for our superintendent to be able to execute them. Then we would absolutely have to come back and revisit those expectations and goals and, and the outcomes and see if we have been able, that we have been successful in providing what our, what our vision was.
Okay. And Mr. Critchfield, I'm sorry, Dr. Elhessen, please.
Okay. So I think it's important that we're looking as a board, is where are we with our strategic plan when you're looking at policy development, especially today where we are with COVID, about reopening our schools. In regards to performances of superintendent, there are, there's a formal process, a systemic process that's in place that has been followed and will continue to be followed in regards to evaluating where we are on our strategic goals and plans and how it's being, and how they're being addressed. So from that perspective, I think that's, those, those parts are in play right now through the board. I think the key thing now is having a board that's really flexible and able to understand the current needs as we're moving forward to reopening our schools and creating a safe environment for our students. What policies are we going to be putting into place now that's going to be impacting our parents and our students?
And Mr. Critchfield, please.
So I, I believe we have an obligation to our students as well as the taxpayers in our community to make sure that everybody in the district is doing their job. Being a candidate, I only know what I know. And I'm looking forward to getting on the board and learning for myself how things are, are doing and where they could be better. And I'm looking forward to doing that investigative work when I'm there and learning as much as I can up till that point so I can make the best decisions I can as a board member within the guidelines of what I, I am responsible for as a board member. But no matter what the situation or the issue is, I am a parent first and I will sleep just fine at night and I will make the best decisions for my children and the children of the community.
Thank you. See, we're going to go to Dr. Elhessen for our fourth question from the audience. What two things do you think the school board needs to be more transparent about? And how will you implement that transparency?
I think one is communication across board, across the board, whether it's between our school sites, between our administrators, between our board members, and I think even with our unions, both the BTA and CSBA. The other thing I think it's really important now, today, as we're addressing the issues as they come about with COVID and reopening our schools, is the opening and how it's going to be done in a safe manner that's going to meet the needs of our teachers, of our classified staff, as well as our parents and the students, most importantly. So those are things I see that happening right now. How's that going to be evolving? Where, what are some policies we need to be putting into place right now? What are some other districts doing that are addressing those issues? What are some things that had failed before in previous districts that we don't want to repeat in our district? And so those are things that are important to look at.
Mr. Critchfield, please.
I'm sorry, Jen, could you repeat the question? I'm sorry.
Absolutely. What two things do you think the school board needs to be more transparent about? And how will you implement that transparency?
Okay. Well, I think the, a, a lot of it's the, what, what happens in the board meetings. So we've kind of covered that with the live streaming and, and making that more accessible. But there, there's a lot of things that we can, we can sunshine a bit and, and inform the community on so they feel and they are a part of those conversations. A, as Dr. Sue mentioned, like engaging the, the teachers as well as the classified staff, which again, Myra and I are both endorsed by. I think having those relationships and being able to work with them is very, very important as we go forward. And being able to, again, facilitate that positive, that positive culture and that, in those positive relationships. So we can not only get things done, but we can do them in a better way that's more professional and more conducive to a, a learning environment.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, please.
Yes. So to, one of the items that we need to be a little bit more transparent on is how do we get our kids safely back to school and with that staff as well? So there hasn't really been a, a very cohesive plan as of yet. And I believe that parents are really looking to the district to be able to at least communicate with them that there is a plan, that there is a way, a process that will be instituted and protocols that will be followed in order to ensure that we are taking the safety of their students and our staff seriously. So I believe that that's one of the things that we need to be very transparent about. The other one, like mentioned before, and Mr. Critchfield said as well, is the communication piece, which, you know, we need to work with our unions and our community.
Thank you. Our next question goes to Mr. Critchfield first. What will you do to increase culturally responsive curriculum in the school?
Again, I, I think, I, I know collaborating with our stakeholders is the most important thing we can do. And facilitating, facilitating that communication and welcoming those voices and those opinions is going to be, going to be critical when it, when it comes to actually engaging in creating that, that curriculum. I think we need to not only do that, but you know, one thing we can do as a board is, is adopt a, a core values and, and make sure that as a board, we're working together to be inclusive. And, and make sure we're, we're pushing in the right way to not only include all of our students, but to make all of our students more comfortable in their learning environments.
Thank you. And Ms. Garcia, please.
So curriculum is state-driven. It's already set for teachers, so we can't change that. But we can absolutely include, like Mr. Critchfield had said, those values. What do we want our kids to be leaving our schools with? How are we going to be making them global citizens? How do we implement, you know, those, those specific skills that we want them to have as, you know, citizens of our community? So that absolutely needs to be in kind of embedded in what we do and as teachers and as being a teacher. I know that day in and day out, that, that's already something that we do as, as teachers. So going forward, we would need to make sure that we can maybe help out our teachers and, and implementing those and maybe giving them those resources that they need to be able to do that.
Thank you. Dr. Elhessen, please.
Well, having served on the Commission of Inclusive Excellence at Cal State Long Beach, I'm very aware of the issues that arise on having an inclusion, inclusive campus environment, which has to do also K through 12. And specifically, the legislature recently passed that they're mandating all state universities to offer ethnic studies class. And I think there's room for improvement at, in our district in, in regards to including curriculum or courses that would be more inclusive for cultural sensitivity and education on different cultures. And that would be a broad spectrum of understanding. And I think that kind of falls in line. And I think that kind of falls in line with what we're looking at when we're having students transition to a four-year university, since that's going to be something that's mandated across the board throughout the state of California. Culturally sensitive information has to be also written in board policy. And how are we going to be doing that? I know when I was in the board, we did that for bullying. That's one example.
I'm Ms. Up. Ms. Garcia, you will be answering our next question first. And it is, please describe how you feel Bellflower Unified School Leadership handled the school closure in the spring, communication through the summer, and reopening plans for the start of the school year. How could they have done better?
First of all, I want to begin by saying that I was a teacher at that point. So I don't, I wasn't privy to all the information that the board had. And I do, what I do understand of that is that it was ever change, it was fast changing at that point. So with that, I believe that we should have, we as teachers and us, and I know that parents believe that they, there should have been more communication. There's always room for improvement in that area within our district. And that's why I am going to work hard so that I am able to make those connections and bridge those gaps of communication within all aspects and, and our community and with our parents and, and our civic leaders as well.
Thank you.
So that way we can work together.
Thank you. I'm sorry. Dr. Elhassan, please.
There's always room for improvement. I think during that time, I wasn't on the board and I wasn't a teacher at the district at that time either. So all I can say is what I heard from the community and from parents. And many of the parents were frustrated, didn't understand what was going to be happening and that there was last minute information that was coming through. So I think there's room for improvement. I also understand from the other side that the LA County Health Department was also in transition and not understanding how COVID was going to be affecting the environment for specifically for youth. I didn't know it to having expectations. So there was no clear set policy even at the LA County level. So that was the struggle the district had. And I'm sure board members had, I didn't talk to them at the time, not sure what was bringing down. But I know from the county level, there was no consistency of information.
Mr. Critchfield, please.
So I think it's very hard to give a report card for how people handed closures during COVID because I think we were all kind of in the same whirlwind. I know as a small business owner myself, I had opened up and then closed down, then opened up, and it was costly. And again, I think that there is obligation to, to the taxpayers to, to not waste money. So I think that there was some hesitation. Was there room for improvement? Yes. And I think that that's what we've, we've spent a lot of time, all three candidates. I think we've spent a lot of time and we acknowledge the fact that there needs to be improvement in communication, transparency, decision making. And I think that's one of the silver linings of COVID is it's really kind of kicked us in the butt a little bit. We, we got to get on this technology stuff and we got to start planning for this stuff. So yes, it could have been better. I would, I would have liked to see more communication. Just as a parent, I felt a little left in the dark and that wasn't a good feeling. And I know a lot of people felt the same way as me. But we can change that.
Thank you. We have two questions left. Send this one goes to Dr. Elhassan first. Our district has a history of shuffling kids and teachers three plus weeks into the school year. Do you support this procedure? How would you change this procedure if at all?
I'm not sure what they mean by hustling.
Shuffling.
Oh, shuffling, sorry. I didn't hear it coming. Okay. There's changes to enrollment as specifically, I remember one situation, I haven't been there. I've been on the board for two years now, a little over two years. So when I was on the board, what was happening at one point was we had a huge I mean residential increase of students in one area. It was specifically, I think Craig Williams. And so the priority are is, is that for anyone living within that school district, in regards to, for example, Craig Williams, they have first priority to go to that school. So if students were there, and I, I heard this complaint from parents, many parents where their kids have been going there since kindergarten and now why is my child being placed back at Washington or at Foster? So there are issues in regards to that, that specific rule that need to be changed. The board can relook at that from that perspective.
Thank you. Uh, Dr. I did it again. I'm going to promote you tonight.
Three times and it's official. So I, I would say that there's pro, just being, giving people the benefit of that. There's probably a, a, a very valid reason for why it happens. And I'm, I'm very interested to seeing the, the other side of candidacy that, to see what's going on there. But I just know we got to do better. I just, I just know for how, how many parents I've heard complain about this and, and the heartbreak that it's caused so many parents. I understand like there's, it's probably efficient or maybe it saves some money. Or maybe, I don't know what it is. There's probably a very good reason for it. I just know we can do better. And I, I'm excited to be a, a part of, of that process to, to make it better because we have to, we, we have an obligation to those parents and we have an obligation to taxpayers as well. But we, we can make that process better. I'm very confident that, that we can and we need to look at it. Because the, the horror stories I've heard from parents is, it's crazy.
Thank you. And Ms. Garcia, please.
I too agree with Mr. Critchfield. There has to be a better way of us doing this without having to penalize our families, put them out and, and it just doesn't make sense that we have families who are being split up and one child is going to one club, one school. And another child's going probably across the district to a different school. And they're expected to be there on time. That's impossible for anybody to do. So obviously, we need to revisit that reorganization criteria and see how we can actually help our parents get their kids on time and show them that we are there to support them and not penalize them for, you know, having two kids going to different schools, which is not their fault.
Thank you. Dr. Elhassan, please.
Oh, I thought I answered that question already.
I beg you. Where am I? Okay. Oh, we're on our last question. That's why I got confused. Okay. And this one goes to Mr. Critchfield first. What could be done to make each school in Bellflower a great school to attend? There is such a gap between Bellflower and Mayfair.
Yep. I, I'm, I'm gonna, it's going to be my, my, my theme, I think, for, for this is positive cultural shift from the top down. And as Dr. Sue mentioned, it does take time, but there are things that we could do right away to get that train rolling. And it's a lot of the solutions that we've talked about tonight as far as communication, transparency, and, and bringing back some school pride, right? And getting the community engaged, get them excited about their schools. We need to go out there and bring some energy into our district, energy into our, our individual schools that I think the PTA does a great job. I think our, our teachers, when they're happy to be at work, when our staff is happy to be at work, they're going to do their job by, by bringing excitement and energy to those campuses. And I think as a board, it's very important to encourage that, build back the pride and bring some positive energy into our district in the post-COVID world.
Thank you. Ms. Garcia, please.
I agree with Mr. Critchfield as well. There needs to be some more pride taken, you know, given to our schools. And I also understand that there is a completely different environment on each campus. So we need to absolutely foster the positives and make sure that we are providing opportunities for each one of our schools to grow and to, you know, be positive. And that all just comes from above, from the top as well. I have to also, you know, be their cheerleader, provide support, be in their classrooms, not, not as just the board member, but also, you know, to have a conversation with my teachers and, and see what is it that you need or how can I help you? So those are all, you know, ways that we can engage and make sure that there is a positive culture and that we are helping out each small community within each school.
Thank you. Dr. Elhassan, please.
Did you repeat the question again?
Yes.
Please.
There we go. What could be done to make each school in Bellflower a great school to attend? There is such a gap between Bellflower and Mayfair.
Okay, because it went from each school to two Pacific schools. That's why I wanted you to repeat the question. And I think there's something important in addressing that. I've been to both sides. Actually, I've been on Bellflower campus since the nineties when I was consulting there for students. So I think it's important to realize that both Bellflower and Mayfair High School offer unique perspectives and address the needs for those students and those other, on that environment. I think Bellflower is fantastic. We have a wonderful program that's involved with our Cal apps. And also Mayfair, it has its own unique sets of uniqueness. And I think sharpening those, making them stronger is important. And Myra had mentioned pride, but it's also teacher pride with their students and pride on, for the students and being happy that they're on that campus as well.
Thank you. Okay, closing statements. And we begin with Dr. Elhassan, please. Three minutes.
Okay. I'm honored to participate. Thank you very much for the League of Women Voters for putting on the Zoom webinar to share with the community. So thank you for that. I, I want to say that my education, my doctorate in education from USC and my dissertation specifically in working with special ed and enhancing the capacity and self-efficacy of students has always been my passion. I treat, I believe inclusion and equality for all students is so important, especially today. Valuing each student for who they are and the strengths that they bring, not only to themselves, to their family and to the community, is something that I take pride in helping to foster and build in our community and in our school district. I have the unique ability to offer, like I said, the resources throughout the state because of my role as a commissioner for Janice Hahn and Governor Newsom. Governor Newsom, specifically, I'm a commissioner on disability access. So creating tools and having state resources to have technology up to par regarding 508 guidelines for people with disabilities across, across the board is important to me personally. Also, because I'm able to have worked with the district since the 1990s, I have a keen understanding of its growths, of some of its weaknesses, its ability to thrive. And as Brad had mentioned earlier, the family spirit that continues to be something of a focal point and strong empowering for our district. I also have a strong belief that my ability and why I started to consider being, uh, coming back to the board was during this time because of my expertise, knowledge on online learning. I've been teaching with the University of Phoenix for the past 10 years online. So I have that expertise to be able to provide and support the district in moving forward in this area and possibly looking at new ways of creating microeducation communities that would incorporate both a hybrid process where we have student learning and online learning as a collaborative to support parents, teachers, and most importantly, our, our students. One of the main reasons I enjoy being on the board is the connections I make, not only with the parents and the students, but with administrators and also with teachers. It's always been a pleasure to connect with people one-on-one as well as classified staff. I've had some people come up and tell me, Sue, just you coming by and saying hello and recognizing me makes me feel important and we need someone like that back on the board. So it's one of the reasons that I want to come back is the connections that I've built in the past that are heartfelt. And when I, when I work in any community, I, I focus on relationship building.
Thank you. Mr. Critchfield, please.
So after all said and done, I, I'm a parent and I want to be on the board to advocate for my child and the community and everyone's child. I think it's important for people to be welcome to the table. I think it's important to be a child advocate. I learned that very well when my daughter was sick with cancer. I learned that there's nothing more important than being an advocate for those that can't advocate for themselves. And on top of the, sorry, on top of that, being a small business owner, engaging with the community was our key to success and that's why we lasted for 10 years. I believe in community engagement. I believe in advocating for children. And I believe in collaboration and communication. And I don't have any predisposition or there, there's no agenda going into this other than making good decisions that benefit our kids. I believe we have a, a obligation to our taxpayers. I believe that we have an obligation to our parents. I want to go in as a public servant and serve our community and make it as good as it possibly can be. And I, and when I considered running for, for, for this position, I really had to think it. I really do feel that I have all of the, the, the right strengths for this particular time that we're in right now when it comes to innovative ideas, technology, experience, my job experience, my community experience, working as chairman of the Chamber of Commerce. And I'm, I'm humbled by the amount of support that I've gotten from Lakewood Mayor Todd Rogers, Councilmember Steve Croft, you know, Bellflower Mayor Juan Garza, Ray Dutton. I, I'm humbled, even Marissa Perez from Seridos College Board of Trustees. It, it's, I've really had to look at myself. And this has been a journey for myself these past few months stepping into this role. And I am more sure now than ever that I can do, do not only the job, but do it well. And I know I can do it with integrity. And that being said, I won't use up the whole time, but I just want to say thank you to the League of Women Voters and the Council of PTAs. And also, Dr. Sue, thank you for what you've done. I, I do appreciate you. And also Myra, Garza, we've gotten to know each other very well. We're together on so many things. And, uh, you know, I, I really appreciate that relationship. And I just want to say thank you to everybody watching. And if you want to support, votebrad2020.com.
And Ms. Garcia, please.
Campaigns are expensive, you know.
Thank you. So as a teacher, I bring a lot of value to our school district because I have actually worked in the place that I'm going to now be a leader in. I understand that, you know, I want to bring communication. I want to bring the transparency. I want to bring, I want to be that bridge to be able to connect the needs of the students and families and our, and our teachers with, you know, the very difficult decisions that as a board member I would have to make. I also wanted to, my vision for these four years is to be transformative, to be a model for, you know, that transformative change that we're having. It's going to take some time, but I'm going to roll up my sleeves, get in there and work along with my colleagues and be collaborative with them so that way we can set these goals and expectations for, you know, across our school district and that we are meeting these needs for our kids and our, at the end of the day. Because that is the most important thing for us. It's making sure that our kids are learning and making sure that our teachers have the support, our parents are, feel like we are listening and we're supporting them as well to come together and be able to provide the best education that our district has for them. To come together and be able to provide the best education that our district has for them. And also, um I'd like to thank the League of Women Voters and the PTA's Council. Um so that way, um thank you for putting this on tonight.
Thank you all very much. I'm going to turn it back over to uh Ms. Hamamoto and then we will do a final close-up by the league.
Um again, I just want to thank you so much, um Dr. Sue, Brad, Myra. I really admire um your amazingness tonight. I know this is not easy. I know it was not um the kind of forum that we anticipated, but you guys made it perfect and you answered questions to the best of your abilities. And I think that you brought a new sense to um our families. And they can understand you and they see where you're coming from and they know a little bit more about you. So I hope that this was perfect opportunity for our families and for our students, our faculty and our staff. I know that um the next couple of weeks are going to get a little bit busy and a little bit crazy for you. We wish you nothing but the best. We thank you for participating to the League of Women Voters. You um ladies are amazing. We obviously could not have done this without you. And thank you so much for your support and for helping us put this on. And we just thank you for tonight. It was a excellent opportunity to meet the candidates. So thank you so much.
Thank you.
All very, very much. Very much appreciate it. We had over fifty questions asked. I apologize that we could not get to anywhere near all of the questions that were asked. Thank you to the candidates and thank you to the audience. And a special thanks to the Bellflower Council of PTAs for co-hosting with us. Good night, everybody.
Good night.
Night.